Like to call the board this January fourth, uh, twenty twenty-two Board of Education Workshop. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America. One nation under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we go into public comment, I think, uh, Ray, Dr. Blanch had a few things to say, something to say.
Thank you very much, Heidi. So, yes, um, um, I'm, you know, we're all disappointed that we're all back here doing the Zoom meeting. Um, and I know, uh, in particular for our Zoom meeting here tonight, because we have, you know, our trustees and then frankly, if, uh, if we were to do this Zoom meeting, we really wouldn't have had a meeting because some of our own trustees are, uh, making sure they're taking care of their own homes being, uh, with COVID and quarantining and all those things. So I wanted to thank the board for allowing us to continue, uh, to help make our decisions and move the district forward. So thanks for letting us get back to the, uh, this, even though hopefully it's a short-lived experience and we'll hopefully be back on the eighteenth, uh, back in the library at the middle school. So thank you, board. Um, the next piece I just want to mention before we go over, and again, thank you to the board. Uh, we had initially identified, uh, just our special services annual report, which we've been doing for a number of years in January, with, uh, Mrs. O'Connor now coming forward and sharing just an update there. Um, we did go ahead and add a COVID update there ahead of time. So for this evening tonight, after our, our public comment, we do have the district physician here to speak, and, and kind of address some things specifically from that medical perspective. And then also then myself or more likely Matt Parr will speak a little bit on any logistical questions as we're certainly, that we all certainly know what's going on with Omicron increase here. Um, and so we just wanted to make sure we spent a little time on the medical side and the operational side updating the board and the community on that matter. So, so thank you, Heidi, for just letting me know. And then after that, we'll go ahead and we'll talk to Stacy. So I'll go ahead and turn that back over to you. And then I think Kevin can kind of start seeing if we have any people that have comments this evening.
Okay, yes. So at this point, it's public comment. And this is specifically for agenda items. So as Dr. Blanch mentioned, um, we do have a COVID update. And if you have comments on that, you may want to wait until after you, we hear what the report is and we have a chance for discussion because there'll be a lot of information, um, shared in that that may answer some questions or address concerns. Um, and then there is also the, um, the special services report coming up. So if there's public comment on those items, you can raise your hands now.
And then Kevin, just say, I know this is probably bringing, um, nightmares back, maybe your flashbacks. Thank you for being here tonight and, uh, uh, having people transition from audience to panelists if we need to be. So thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Just a reminder to anyone who is an attendee who'd like to raise their hand at the bottom of your screen. There's a little icon that says raise hand. That'll indicate to me that you'd like to make a public comment, at which time I'll, make you a panelist, which will allow you the opportunity to turn your video and audio on. Once your comment's complete, we'll put you back as an attendee. As of right now, I don't see any hands.
Okay, so I think we can go ahead then.
Great. And I'll go ahead and, uh, ask the Dr. Barsh to go ahead and join us here with his, uh, uh, camera and his, uh, uh, audio and things like that. So we're going, evening, Dr. Barsh. Good to see you.
Good evening. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. So happy new year to you too. Thank you. So, um, I think we, we, uh, talked either before nears and after. So I know we've had some conversations as late. So thank you, sir. Um, so our, uh, hope tonight is to really try to clarify, uh, some of what we're dealing with right now, not just in our district, but obviously across our country in relationship to COVID. And, and I know this feels very familiar to me, this whole last January with, uh, the Zoom. Um, yet it's very different from, I would say, the COVID that we dealt with last year. So I know you'll kind of highlight that and some of the things. And I know one of the parts that certainly I have been asked, and I know my colleagues have been asking things like that, kids, uh, should be be in school. So I'll go ahead and turn that over to you, Dr. Barsh. I'll let you go ahead and warm yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah. And hi, everybody. And I hope everybody's healthy. And yes, it, it'll be great to be back in person, uh, as soon as possible. I think the most important question, and I think we can lead with that, is the, the question that Dr. Blanch led with is, you know, should kids be in school? Um, there's no question that we should do everything in our power to keep our schools open and our children in school. I, I think that, you know, what's very different from last year is that as much as we, we, we really tried to keep the children in school and our focus was really on transmission. COVID didn't, the Omicron variant is a new variant. It's really, let's think about it as almost as a new virus. And, um, we may, we're not gonna, we're not able to stop the transmission as much as slow it. And while we're doing that, we really need to change our focus to be able to keep our, our staff healthy, our bus drivers healthy, our teachers healthy, and as well as our students healthy and keep the school open. I don't have to tell anybody that with our children not in school, how far they fell behind academically, socially, and you could look at any, you can open any newspaper and look at how our, the mental, how our teens were experiencing mental health problems, suicide attempts rising, gun violence rising, and how that can continue if we aren't able to provide the kids with that safe place to go, um, during the day. Um, in terms of the Omicron variant, everyone uses the word world, word milder. And we have to be careful when we talk about the, use the word mild because the impact is not mild. It may be milder because the patients are now younger. It may be mild that because more people are vaccinated, but there's no question that the impact is huge that for unvaccinated people, for older people and for people with comorbidities, the, the infection is still not necessarily a mild infection. And what's also important to realize is that what we're going to try to do with our mitigation efforts and with our prevention efforts, such as continuing to vaccinate people who are unvaccinated and boost people who are vaccinated, we're really going to try to slow the spread as much as we can. In terms of our mitigation factors, we had talked at our last Board of Ed meeting about using masks. And there was a lot of debate about using masks and how effective masks were. And I think there, there's no question that mitigating the spread of all viruses with, um, air circulation, wearing masks and with distancing really can help lower the risk of the spread of infection. Turns out that we probably have to step up our mitigation efforts to now change our masks from cloth masks to surgical and probably even to N ninety-five masks if they're available. We also have the ability now to do a lot more testing in our school and at home. We have the test to stay program. We have the use of rapid testing that'll really help us keep track of what's happening in the school, uh, keep people who are infected at home, uh, until they're able to be less contagious and be back in school. Um, hopefully, if we followed what's happening across the world, hopefully what we're going to see is that the amount of time that Omicron really, um, is affecting us is short-lived. If we look at South Africa right now, a few weeks after it started, it's really, uh, becoming less of an effect as more of the population is immune. Uh, and hopefully this will, uh, be the way we experience it as well. And so hopefully by mid to end of January, we'll have a real, we'll be, we'll have a, um, an easier time. So again, I, I, I don't want to be, um, I, I don't want to take too much time. I wanted to be as concise as, as we could be. And Dr. Blanch, I want to answer questions specifically, uh, if the board has them or if you have them. So thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Barsh. So I'm, I'm wondering as it opens up to the board here, I, I know one question you, I think, kind of started mentioning a little bit about those, um, um, the rapid tests, uh, that we have now. And so we're able to use that test to stay program in particular if our employees or roughly about ninety-three percent of those who are fully vaccinated come back. Uh, you know, how does that help us as those folks who come back and maybe we're COVID positive it, you know, because it's not, it's not the PCR, but it's the code. It seems like that actually does help us though.
It helps us a lot. You know, the, the rapid test is very different, um, than the PCR. The PCR tests, the DNA, the presence of the DNA and the antigen tests, the, uh, the rapid test tests the antigen or the infectivity. And the timeline is different and the information it gives us is different or the usefulness of it is different. One rapid test does not equal one PCR. So the, the usefulness of the rapid tests, um, they're most useful when someone is symptomatic and they're most useful used serially, meaning that I can test someone on something like on a few days in a row, like day one, two, three, or day two, three, four, three, four, five. So it's going to help us a lot with people who, um, are coming back out of isolation to make sure they're not in, can, not infectious to others anymore. It's going to help us a lot for people who will start to have a symptom. And remember, COVID is a respiratory virus, which if we have to, we have to consider it, um, the same thing as a rhinoviral infection, right? It, you don't have to feel sick. You can just have a symptom and it can be COVID. And so that rapid test on the, on the day that someone wakes up with a runny nose, um, maybe a useful test. And it may not be a useful test just to use for one day, Dr. Blanch. We may have to use it for two, three or four days to really get the most, the most effect out of it.
Thanks, Dr. Barsh.
So I have a, a couple of questions, uh, on that, that testing one. So can you give some advice on like for, for staff and for fam, for families with kids in the schools on exactly what we should be using for testing and when we should get a PCR test? Um, obviously PCR tests are hard to get and urgent cares are crazy. So you hate to go if you don't need to also and, and help and contribute to bogging down the system. So when do we need a PCR and when do we need a rapid?
Wow, that's a great question. How much time do you have? How many days do you have? And the problem is also how confusing this gets. You know, because one of the things that happens is the more you talk about it, all of a sudden, the more you start to kind of confuse yourself. There's no question that if you think you need to go to an urgent care or to your doctor or to the emergency room, you go. There's no such thing as it not being worth it. I mean, that's so important to realize that if you, if you needed, if you need someone, you, you call someone, you see someone. The PCRs are becoming, not only are they becoming harder to get, but it's also because of how many we're doing, they're taking longer to result. And so the antigen test is starting to kind of fill that gap. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to, to do the best we can. No test is perfect, right? Because even in the best, even the best PCR is at best on maybe day five of illness, eighty percent correct. Right? And I don't know if anyone remembers that from the very beginning of the testing, that even at the best, at, at its best, it's no more than seventy to eighty percent correct, which means that two out of three, two to three times out of ten, we might not be right yet. And so the antigen test is really something that's going to help us in place of the PCR. So for instance, if you're sick, then try to get a PCR. If you can't get a PCR and you can get the antigen testing, if you're sick, do the antigen testing and do it for three or four days in a row. And if you're, and if you're still negative, keep on going, right? Keep on going to work. Keep on going to school if you're negative. And if you're positive, stop. We'll take a positive.
What about these at-home antigen tests? Are they as accurate as the one in the lab?
Okay, so then again, they, the at-home test, which is what we're, so when we use the word, uh, rapid test, let's say we're using the at-home tests, right? That's the rapid test. Because we also in the, in the office can do a rapid test that's PCR equivalent. So the at-home tests, again, the usefulness of it, it's, it's filling the gap that until I can get that PCR. So the, it's useful because on the, if I have symptoms and it's useful done serially. So if I can do it for three or four days, because I have a stuffy nose, it becomes very useful.
And with the, what I'm trying to say is you go to the labs for these rapid antigen tests. Are these home PCR tests the equivalent of that? Are they less or better or doesn't really matter?
I, I think an antigen test is an antigen test. So for me, I can do the, if I have it at home, I can do the antigen test at home. If I'm able to get a PCR, I'll do a PCR, whether it's a rapid PCR, which is actually the nucleic amplification test, the NAT, N A T, or the overnight PCR. Those are still going to be, um, a better test or more definitive test. But the antigen tests are going to be very useful. We can make really good use out of the, out of the antigen tests while we either wait for a PCR or don't get a PCR if we have a positive.
Joe, are you, I, I just want to make sure. I'm, I'm curious now. So it's presumably we're using the antigen tests at the schools. Yes, they're not the PCR tests and, and presumably if we're following the, the thread that antigens are, as you said, Dr. Barsh, no more than eighty percent correct. We're relying on the no more than eighty percent correct as part of our tests to stay. Is that correct? So?
No, 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 no. The eighty percent is the PCR.
Okay.
So the antigen test is, is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt or cut you off. I'm
No, no, no. This is good. This is clarity. Thank you.
The, oh, clar- clarity would be great.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Right? Clarity would be fabulous. Um, so the antigen test, one antigen, antigen test only tells you what you tested that moment. It doesn't, it's, so it's not as effective. It's not as, as good an answer as a PCR test is going to be. The antigen test tests a different thing. It tests how infectious I am. So there's a, a window that the day, say, three, four, five, six, that window after exposure. The antigen tests were made to be used if someone is sick and it can be, and made to be done serially, which means you do a few, you do it for a few days to be sure.
So, so now you're saying that the antigen test is what we're testing for test to stay, correct, in the schools? Is that not what we're using?
That is what we're using now. So the way the, the, the way the New York State Department of Health want, so it's good to have. So again, think about it this way. Don't think about only having one right thing to do or one right thing to use. What we're trying to do is make the best out of everything we have.
What I'm trying to get at is that our capacity right now in the schools is to do this test as a test to stay, right?
Correct.
Um, and, and we're also trying to be wise about any sort of mitigation strategies to, to reduce the risk of, of spreading. Fine. If you're saying, then I think you said something about how this new variant is more contagious. And so I'm thinking about other mitigation. So from your professional medical experience, what are your thoughts on, for instance, um, the lunchroom as a potential place for, for this to be problematic? Or if it's not problematic, demonstrating that it's not problematic. I mean, I'm just curious.
All right. So wait, let's go back. Let's answer that. But can we go back to the test to stay for quite, uh, for a second? Is that okay, guys? So the test to stay is going to help us a lot. It may not be the original way they wanted us to use the antigen, antigen tests. But that's okay, because it's still a test we can use. And it's still a way to monitor the children to have some control or some insight into what's happening. So it's really a good thing, even though it, it may be, it, it's useful in another way as well. It's really good to have the test to stay ability. As far as the lunchroom goes, or as far as mitigation, mitigation or, or let's just say caution, right? You know, even though we're vaccinated and even though we can get testing, which is so much better than we were able to do last year, in order to keep on going, in order to keep the schools open, which is our primary focus, what we have to do is we have to continue to mitigate, right? So we wear N ninety-five masks. We ventilate, we keep windows open. And yes, it might get cold on some days in the winter, but let's wear our coats. Let's keep the windows open. Let's keep fans on. Let's use the, the proper filtration when we can. Um, and let's be, let's eat at a distance. Let's try to do something where we're not sitting shoulder to shoulder, um, like in a restaurant, right? If you, and you know, that's a personal choice we can make if we're going to go eat out in a restaurant. But no, I don't. This is something the kids want to do and it's something they should be able to do. One of the things, one of the most recent things I read about, you know, those plastic shields we were putting up everywhere between people, right? Between in the offices, you let, you walk up to the nurse and, you know, you have a shield. Well, it turns out that the shields actually hamper airflow. So if I really am wearing my mask, am I, if I'm wearing a well-fitting N ninety-five mask with good ventilation, I'm probably better off without the shield. Is, is something new that we're learning.
Right. And they're without a mask.
I know.
Yeah, the question was specifically about the lunchroom and the masking, right? And I, and I, you know, I know we're doing the best that we can, but that's a question that comes up regularly.
So let's not sit, if we can, let's not sit, sit shoulder to shoulder. Let's keep, you know, on every other seat space if we can. And it's, and let's ventilate it really well, because we're going to have to have our masks off when we're eating lunch. And the kids are going to scream and they're going to yell. And so that's going to be part of what, what happens. And that's part of how it's, we're doing, we're going to do the best we can while we're letting the kids have that experience.
So are we ventilating the spaces where we have the kids eating in our schools, like making sure the windows are open?
Right. So all of those spaces, depending upon which building obviously has a little bit more window access and, uh, some, some have a little bit more door access. So when it's available and it's open, yes, uh, those, those are certainly open. Um, I know we, we continue to, you know, remind ourselves of making sure that those windows and doors are open. I know, Dr. Barsh, when we talked, you've been pretty clear with me. You said, Ray, you, you're not going to be able to hide from, you're not going to be able to get away from this. This, this virus is going to go through the schools, go through the community. Um, every mitigation factor you're putting in place, testing kids now is the thing we didn't used to be able to do before. Now we're doing it. All that's helping, but the reality is of what we're seeing now is that we're seeing certainly more students um, that are contracting this than the previous, uh, virus strand. Uh, yet everything we're hearing, students are coming back in a typical fashion after the minute, even our staff members who have been fully vaccinated and even boosted have had, had COVID. Again, they're not having that significant, uh, uh, impact on the medical side of things. So they're coming back. And I think that we can help. I don't think there's anything that will stop revenge. When we were really, really, in my mind frame, I was there last, uh, last variant. I was like, get these masks, get these, now we can keep our numbers down. We got a kid, we found a person, isolate quarantine. Look, hey, nobody came out of quarantine that was positive. That's old virus. That's not the sweet piece. The reality is people are going to come out of quarantine or say, oh, look, we had to quarantine ten people and oof, four of them were positive. That, that is the reality that we're in, right? I know you've been very clear with me about, say, look, where that, that's where you're sitting. It's not the same virus.
That's right. And as far as the lunchroom goes, um, yeah, I want, we want our kids to have a school experience. And we want to do the most we can to give them that experience. And so, yeah, we want the lunchroom open and we want them to enjoy that. And we want them to do all the other things that they would do in school while we're doing the best we can. And as Dr. Blanch said, knowing that this is going to be spreading, there are going to be more and more positive, uh, cases, more and more positive children with more and more children in that are positive. Um, and hopefully, again, the, the fact that they're children, it's milder, the fact that more and more adults are vaccinated, it's milder. So we can get everyone back to school. Everyone who works there and everyone who learns there, back to school faster. Also, we have to, I'm sorry, we have to realize is that when we're infected, that also helps immunity. That helps the community, the immunity in, in the whole community. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no. Were you suggesting that, that being infected helps build immunity? Is that what you were just saying?
Oh, it does. There's no question that having an infection is a boost to our immunity. And having a, an, a vaccine after an infection is another boost to immunity. So if, um, it's okay, it's, it's not okay to be infected, but there, the upside of having an infection like they just saw in South Africa is that, you know, if more, if eighty percent of the population now has immunity because of how Omicron, Omicron spread, well, that's the reason why it's milder now. That's the reason why two to three weeks later, all of a sudden cases are down, hospitalizations are down, even the hospitalized patients aren't going to the ICU as often. So, you know, while we're keeping things open and realize that we're doing the best we can, yes, the spread is, is going to help us, uh, build immunity.
So are you advocating for, it just sounds like you're advocating for spreading it. I think we want to share. And hang on, I have another question, because you did mention masks. Yeah, you just said that, that there were a better type of masks that we should be wearing. But the schools don't have any sort of mandate for type of mask, just that the child is wearing or that the student is wearing a mask. Um, is that something that we should wonder about or we don't even need to talk about?
So I'm not advocating for spread. I go to work every day and I'm here tonight to help us not get infected and not spread it. But realistically, what are we seeing? We're seeing that even with our best efforts, it's spreading. So what we're learning is that this, through the spread in a community, in an area, immunity does build. So no, I'm not advocating spread. So please, please be, let's be clear about that.
You're just looking for a silver lining, right, Doc?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Thank you.
I guess. So not to feel bad if you do get it because you're helping to contribute to the community, community.
I don't know. Is there, Dr. Blanch, is there a mandate for the type of mask, uh, that we're directed to use?
No, from the state nor from the county, there is a, not a mandate for those types of masks. Uh, we have, I know that, um, you know, in our work, even with you, we're looking at, I think we can place an order for employees today to go ahead and get those updated masks. Cause you, I've got us going, so hopefully we can get those at the end of the week. Um, but as far as, as, uh, any mandate specific, no. We, we have always tried to do that for folks who are heavily exposed, like our nurses and things like that. So that is a part of it. Yep.
But we can, we can recommend, sorry, masks that are just better or at preventing spread, meaning no gaiters, no woven mask. I mean, I think and I think we should just be firm in that, I think.
And you did make a good point. I apologize. It's been a while since, so the, the, the gaiters are not acceptable. That was a non-acceptable piece that the Department of Health didn't make clear. The gaiters are not acceptable.
So, and why were cloth masks and they're not now?
I'm sorry, Heidi, one more time? Yeah, one second. Hi, I'll just get Heidi and I'll jump over you.
Oh, yeah. Mine was just while we're on masks. Go ahead, Eva. I'll come back to mine.
Okay, uh, I would like to ask both, uh, Dr. Barsh and, uh, and the Ray, uh, to sort of make some statements to clear for me and everybody else. What can, uh, we do or at the minimum for testing at this stage? Okay. Should we, can we do testing on kids on every bus, every classroom entrance and so on, so forth? Or what we desire to do at the maximum? Okay. I want to know the, the, the scope, the range that, uh, uh, you know, what we're facing. And then secondly is on the, on the home side, what do we like to see the home to do minimum? Okay, to assist in this process, testing, masking and so on, so forth. And what we desire to have maximum effort? Can we get that kind of window defined from?
So I'll go ahead and give it a, I'll give it a try. And then I'll ask Dr. Barsh to just drop it in and whatever, uh, he'd like to. So as far as the first part is the school district, the range there, I would say before the break, our range was very minimal from our testing perspective. We honestly did not even have until, uh, about ten days before the break, a test to stay program. So that really wasn't even an option. Pardon me?
So you're saying we are doing nothing as far as testing?
Not what I'm saying. I was giving you a range. So I was starting from where we were before the break. Saying there was not an option for school districts, owners to test, didn't exist. As a group of superintendents, I know lots of different organizations, teachers, and I believe the board, uh, group did as well, advocate for this test and state piece. So now we have that option. So as a district, we started that about eight days before break, once we were informed of the ability to do that. So we started, we only had a few hundred tests. We've been trying to get those tests. We only had a few hundred. So where we started was, was with our students who we knew were exposed in school and they would come in and they would test every day on, like Dr. Barst said, in a serial fashion. So we would, you know, get them if they, if they got it. So that's where we were. So we've moved now from that point to now just, uh, yesterday. Um, you may have seen the governor, uh, kind of broadcast across our schools, um, ton, tens of hundreds of thousands of tests. So we picked up, oh, between around twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred tests. Sounds like a lot, but they go very quickly. And so those tests, what we are doing with those tests is to now expand our test to stay program. So now that includes our children as well as we can now work with our employees in that fashion as well. So that's a piece where we're expanding that test to stay program. Um, I do not frankly, see the feasibility for this school district on a daily basis to test every single student. I think we are at what makes the most logical sense to me now. And I just wanna make sure that supply keeps coming. That's my, that's my biggest concern. Make sure the supply keeps coming. As I know it is for the rest of my colleagues. So, Dr. Barsh, I'm not sure if you think about kind of where we were just a month ago, to where we're at now with testing is a range.
And just like we, we spoke last night at our meeting, at our health committee meeting. You know, we have to, when it comes to testing, we have to consider a couple of, of things. Your, Dr. Blanch is right. We're way ahead of where we were um, last year or even a month ago, when it comes to our ability to test to stay. That's a, that's a very big plus. But we have to realize is that we don't have enough supply to test everybody. And so we're gonna have to keep on looking at that, um, looking at the supply we have and looking at how we're gonna need to use the testing. Also, the other factor is we have to, we don't know how long this will stay this intense. You know, if it drops down in intensity in two or three weeks, all of a sudden, something about this will be easier. And the testing will be easier. If we have a, a more regular supply of the testing, all of a sudden, that's, that makes it easier for us. So what we have to do is we have to look at what we can do today. And we could do this today.
Example, should we have a temperature test on every, uh, school building when kids come in?
The temperature, the temperature readings didn't turn out to be reliable enough uh, to continue to do. So the answer to that is no, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put our effort into temperature scanning. I would put our effort, I would ask, that's something I would ask parents to help us with. To be truthful about how their children are before they get on the bus. Right? I'd like, you, you asked a, a good question. Well, what do we do at home? Well, at home, we're hopefully vaccinating everyone who's old enough to be vaccinated. Hopefully, we're boosting the people that are, you know, are old enough to be boosted. Not everybody is doing that. There was a terrific study out of Sweden. Sweden is, is a place where they can monitor every single person who lives there. And it turns out that if you vaccinate three out of every four people in a home, you actually protect the non-immune person almost as well as if they were vaccinated, vaccinated too. So, yeah, let's, let's vaccinate three out of every four people, which will help us. Let's be truthful about how our kids feel. You know, don't send, don't send, um, your son to school if he has a sore throat. Oh, don't worry about it. He just has allergies. No. He could have this also. Don't come if you have a sore throat. See your doctor. You know, get, get seen, get tested and then come to school if everything's okay. You know, so that's what we need at home. So what's the maximum? That's the maximum. Is working together, is being truthful. We're being truthful with the parents. We're letting them know what we want. We're letting them know what we can do. We're, and they know what we can't do. You know, and we know what, they know what our hope is. And we know that, that they hope that, you know, their kids can stay in school, but we need their help. You know, we need their help with that. And so I'm hoping that they, they can meet us halfway. And they can be as, work as hard as we're trying to work to keep everything going. Then it works, then it's gonna work out better. And then we have a chance.
Yeah, thanks. I, I, I'm glad you said that. I really like to hear that.
And then Heidi, I think you had one in there too?
Um, yeah, mine had just been with the masks because the cloth masks had been okay before. And now you're saying that they're not really, like, what changed that made that work cloth was okay before? And now we really need something more intense.
Another good question, you know, my feeling, so one variant to go, right? With the, the alpha and the delta. My feeling was that it didn't matter what mask by people wore. Because if I filled the room with people with masks and everyone had a mask on, that was okay. Omicron changed the playing field. Omicron is fast. It gets more people, you know, it gets more people at a time. It takes fewer days to get sick. It's also sly. It doesn't have all the same symptoms that the other variants had. If you notice that the people with Omicron are not losing their sense of taste or smell. So it's, it, it figured out how to not be detected as quickly. So why the, why would we all of a sudden change, you know, to change our recommendation? Well, we've always known that a well-fitting KN, and a KN ninety five was a more effective mask. We've always known that. So now it makes sense with, um, you know, a friskier variant, a tricky variant. It makes sense to bump up what we can do, right? And so it makes sense to, to recommend that, cause we can do, we can recommend it and we can do it.
Thanks, Dr. Barsh. I think I see your hand up there, Lindsay. Oh, there you are, yes. Lindsay, your hand up still or that old one?
That, that was an old hand, Ray.
Okay.
I think, I think we've talked in circles and, and we are not medical experts. Thank you for being the, the medical expert here and get a little clarity. I, I just, it sounds like what you're talking about in the Sweden study is not really news. It's just called herd immunity. Right? And the idea is that if enough people are vaccinated, then they protect the people who cannot be vaccinated for whatever reason. Which is why we have eradicated smallpox, for instance. Um, but that's not the point. Um, I'm
Wait, before you go, wait, but that was what, the, the point of that study, the, how helpful that study is or useful is, it's global. Right? Because the, the, if we're not thinking globally, we're never going to get ahead. Cause that's the point. That's what happened with Omicron. We had a pocket that was under vaccinated and this is what happened. So that Swedish study showed us that in terms of our supply of vaccine, we don't have to worry about vaccinating everybody. If we vaccinate three out of every four people, if we vaccinate enough people, we can actually be very successful globally. And so it helped us with thinking about how to get a supply globally.
Great, thanks, Dr. Barsh. And Nick, it looks like yours is a new hand, I think, up there. So, uh, with that, I think Mary Rose has got one too, so.
Um, any change, I, I think the, the CDC changed, um, some of the, um, guidelines as far as going back to work, uh, down to five days. Um, are we doing any of that internally from ten days quarantine to five days?
Yeah, so actually myself and man, and even Dr. Barst, cause the, our health committee kind of met last night. And, uh, basically, I'll, uh, I'll go ahead and maybe Matt turn it over to, yes, we are making that adjustment for our employees. So, you know, my manager's dropping in a little bit how that, what conversation went.
Yeah, so we discussed that as the health committee, um, with the Department of Health recently released guidelines. And again, throughout the pandemic, the, the CDC has always kind of come out ahead of everybody and said, we'll make this change. Uh, if you recall, we went from a fourteen day quarant, quarantine period down to a ten. But we don't get to follow that guidance until our Department of Health in Westchester has adopted it. Um, so as the CDC has come back and said, yes, we can reduce the quarantine time. And then that was kind of over the Christmas break. And then on Monday, Dr. Fauci says, oh, but we need to probably revisit that and, and require a testing component after the fifth day. Um, that has not been, um, adopted by the Department of Health, uh, something that we can use at this point in time. It could be coming down the road in, in the very near future. But what they did say is if, for critical staffing needs, if we have a teacher or any staff member who, um, has tested positive for COVID and on day six, they have waning symptoms or no symptoms at all, then they can, um, come back to work sooner, provided that they have a negative rapid test. Um, and as the health committee met and discussed that last night, we're gonna be moving towards that. Um, cause it, it's, it's no secret, we are, um, struggling a bit with our staffing. And we wanna, you know, try and keep our, um, schools open. So we're gonna make, uh, that adjustment moving forward. Um, and then as, um, clearly, we're gonna communicate as we have. Once the, um, CDC comes out with their revised guidelines for the shortened quarantine period, um, we won't make any changes for students until the Department of Health tells us that we can do that.
Thanks, Matt. I'll go ahead over to Mary Rose and then maybe we'll close out with you, Dr. Barsh, if there's any last, if you'd like to say.
Yeah, I thank you so much, Dr. Barsh and Matt, for like clarifying so much of this. I think there's, there's so much information that gets, it get, it can get misunderstood. And I just want us to be clear. And I, this is my understanding is that what does work in terms of preventing this is community partnerships at schools and families and homes. Because, I mean, I, I live this every day as well. I mean, it's a lot. It's a lot of work, fiscally, human resources to make sure the kids are masked and socially distanced and to make sure they're safe. That partnership with home is so important. And I think that's one way. Uh, Dr. Barsh, I think you said it great. I think herd immunity is great, but vaccines are what prevents it. And I think if you can and when you can, one must, I think is what you said. And, and masks, the appropriate kind. And I think also the CDC changing their guidelines, it seems like they're just kind of wishy-washy, but I think there's a behavioral component to it as well. I think, look, I think if you can afford a KN ninety five mask and access it, great. Like that's what you should have been wearing in twenty nineteen. Now it's, it's more important. That doesn't mean that they change the guidelines. They've always said that those masks are best. But as you said, Omicron kind of almost requires it at this point. And I think even with the five day quarantine, tell me if I'm wrong, I, I believe you are most contagious in those five days, which is why I think you're asked to stay home. You're allowed to come back if your symptoms are better because again, there's, there's less chance of transmission. I just don't want it to seem like the CDC is making all these different guidelines and they're just changing it just willy-nilly. It's actually based on some sort of science, um, cause it's hard to kind of believe as, as guidance changes all the time.
Thanks, Mary Rose. And Dr. Barsh, I should just kind of maybe take us out on that one, just with.
Um, and then our head just spins on our neck. It just spins and spins because there's just too much to think about. And you're right, so the CDC is, one of the difficulties, what has always been with clear, consistent messaging. And, um, and it, you know, here we are sitting and, and discussing this. But the people who are, are actually having the toughest job are our nurses. You know, I talk to our nurses almost every day and Matt, you can, you can, uh, you know this. Is that people are not working with them. People are brutal to them. You know, everyone is, everyone is frustrated and everyone is weary and everyone is tired. But our nurses are, and I'm sorry, I don't know that, I just have to say it. Because our nurses work so hard, care so much and are treated so poorly by the parents. So yes, as a community, we're not there yet. Because they, you know, the nurses are there to really help to, to sit down and talk about what's happening. So we can count the day, so we can take the time to figure out when Johnny can come back to school. And what's important to know is that these things change really quickly. So yes, this is what the CDC said today. So let's be, let's do what we can today. Let's be as clear as we can for ourselves. And then for our, you know, our staff and our students and their families, because it may be different tomorrow. So I'm not, let's not worry about next week or tomorrow. Let's, let's take what we know. Let's take what we can do. And let's do it, and let's do it. Let's do it the best way we can and the most cautious way that we can. And it may change tomorrow, because the CDC may say something new. Um, we're trying our best.
Yeah, and I would say, Dr. Barsh, I agree with you. Um, and I would just ask for everyone's patience with our nurses. They're, they're kind of doing what they're told, they're given parameters to work within. And those parameters, uh, keep on changing, uh, pretty frequently. So, um, we, we do appreciate all the work that our nurses are, are doing for us to keep the schools open.
Uh, thank you, Matt. Thanks, Dr. Barsh. Uh, again, as we know, that, as you mentioned, Dr. Barsh earlier, uh, we had our lead nurse there last night. Thinking about our children and our faculty and staff and how to keep everybody as safe as possible. So they are literally on the job, feels like twenty-four, seven. So, um, again, I'll thank, uh, everybody, Dr. Barsh, for you coming tonight. And, uh, as you, I know we'll probably be talking to you tomorrow and, uh, Matt will be for sure. So, so thanks again for being here, sir.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for including me and, um, letting me think about this with you. I hope that I was, I hope that what, um, my inclusion is help, is helpful. I hope I can help a little bit.
Absolutely, Dr. Barsh. And it always is helpful knowing yourself, being a pediatrician and working with the children of our ages and all that stuff. That's always a one whole thing to know that in our background, we've got somebody who, who is gonna get up to work and go tomorrow and see our own children and stuff. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you. Bye, everybody. Good night.
Thanks. All right. Go ahead, Heidi, anything before she goes over to special.
Conversation about the nurses, one thing that that's making me think, um, I know, having seen some of the communications and received them as a parent. I think that it's so confusing, the quarantine and when you should be staying home and when you shouldn't and when you should test and when you shouldn't. And I found, I think, some of the communications, like it has some scenarios in one email and some scenarios in another email. And I don't know if there's a way to kind of make a, a, a really clear, and like sort of update a clear, um, document that even is, I, and I think it's probably on the website somewhere too. But like, that can be sent out periodically. That's just sort of like, if your kid is that, if you're a vaccinated student, if you're a not vaccinated student, and then here's the scenarios. Um, to just to have some, something that's out there that makes it really easy. You know, an easy place to find it and easy reminder of if you're exposed in the home, if you're exposed outside of the home. If you have, you know, like those different scenarios and exactly what you're supposed to do when you're eligible for tests to stay. I feel like it's confusing and we need like some really clear, easy to read documentation on that. Maybe I've been missing it.
No, I, I certainly think that working on those communications and trying to make those as clear as possible, um, is always helpful. And now with these updated changes, then, you know, Dr. Barsh spoke about making the next iteration clear. Most of the time, honestly, that we're having parents call and have a, a query about, I'm not sure about this. That's not where our nurses are kind of getting, uh, I would say, uh, kind of chewed up a little bit. It's more about, you can't do that. You can't keep my kid out of school. Even it's actually understood, uh, uh, what's going on. It just doesn't, it's not in agreement with what we were being told by the county or by Department of Health from the state. So, but certainly, yes, and now is an opportunity for us again to kind of straighten that up even a little bit better with these changes that are coming our way as well too. So we'll certainly work with our team there and getting that one updated. So, thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, I, I, I sort of got, um, from this whole conversation, uh, one point I like to, uh, make is that seems to me that every individual, every family should really do the maximum protection possible if you can afford it. And that not only help yourself, but it helps the community. I think that's exactly, you know, the conclusion that I can draw from Dr. Barsh's discussion here. I mean, whatever means is helping, do it. Don't try to do the minimum, cut the corners and see, try to get away with it. I think that is, in my view, uh, is not helping for the, yourself as well as the community.
Yeah, and as we shift to Stacy there too, I, I'd like to, I was just walking over to SAS today and Efe, when you spoke there, it made me think about it. Aaron, I bumped to on the way in that, uh, was picking up some homework, cause their, their child was positive and, uh, had to come and get some things. And, uh, the pair was nothing more than thankful, uh, for the nurses and what the teachers were doing and what was taking place. And they, boy, my kid's really disappointed, wants to be in school, I'm here to get the work and hopefully be back next week. So that, that is the typical, uh, you know, piece. But it doesn't take, uh, too, too many folks to have it be, you know, just be more difficult part. So again, I would say that the majority of responses are just like I, I, I wanted to do a parent earlier today at SAS and stuff. So, uh, the community part, we are in it together. It is frustrating. We're all frustrated. I'm sure, and I think Dr. Barst did as well too, did not think we'd be here this, uh, again, here in January, a year later. Um, so, uh, I think we're, um, doing everything we possibly can do and what's at our, our disposal here. So I think Lindsay's got one more and then Stacy, I'll just bring you out there.
Ray, thank you. I would, I thought we were gonna scoop into Stacy, but I just wanna say, I don't know if this needs to be said, but I feel compelled. There's no shame in getting this thing. I just, like, we keep dancing around it as if it's like the worst thing in the world. And yes, it's a bad thing and, and nobody should get sick ever. I also just wanna like normalize the fact that it's a sickness and, and everyone, you know, God willing, we should all be okay. Everybody should get over this. I just wanna normalize and, and remove any sort of stigma or shame that might be around this. People that are feeling uncomfortable and I don't know if anyone is, um, well, some people might be. Um, and I just wanna say, there's, there's no shame here. Um, that didn't come out as nicely as I'd hoped. But before we ended this conversation, I just wanted to put that out there. Um, anyhow, thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. And then I think if it's all right, Heidi, we'll just go ahead to the central office report there with Stacy. And I think Kevin is prepared to kind of bring up that, um, the graphics that Stacy will walk us through. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Good evening, everyone. It's, uh, thanks for giving me some time tonight to talk about the office's special services. I'm sorry that we're having to do it this way, but I'm glad we, we can still meet. And I'll look forward to seeing everybody in person at our next January meeting. Um, what you're gonna hear a lot about tonight is, is two things. First, our commitment to having students with special needs be with their typically developing peers for as much of their school day as possible. And then the other thing you're going to see is, um, how the supports that we try to front load, um, particularly in the early years of a child's education, um, slowly can get taken away and are less needed by students as they gain their independence and as their skills increase. Um, and so I know that, um, I, I don't, it's not always possible to show in percentages and numbers how much children improve. Um, but what I hope to do tonight is give you a little glimpse into, um, the, you know, the student experience of a student with special needs in our district and how they may be needing more things and more helps and more supports as they're They may be needing more things and more helps and more supports as they're younger. And then as they get older, they need less and less of those and. And then we even have obviously a fair amount of students who are declassified and no longer need the support at all. Um, that being said, I just want to start off by saying that the purpose of special education. Is really um to ensure that students with disabilities are educated in an environment that allows them to be educated effectively. It's not necessarily the goal that everybody gets declassified. Some students have lifelong learning disabilities. So really, the purpose of special education is to figure out what those disabilities are. What that means in terms of a child's educational profile, in terms of what kind of supports or modifications they need. And then to provide those in the best manner possible so that it levels the playing field in terms of a child accessing their education and having and having a good outcome. So um, just a few numbers and a few things about the student experience. So first, um, I know that uh in the past, the board has been curious about um declassification numbers. And what I can share with you is that prior to COVID, so of course, just like COVID has had an effect on everything, it it has had. Uh, an effect on the Office of Special Services as well. So prior to COVID, our five year average was declassifying about twenty six students per year on average. Um, for the last two years, that's gone down a little bit and it's been about sixteen students per year. My, my thinking about that is that as we. Review test scores, review what's been happening for students, a lot of what comes up is sort of the disjointed nature of what's happened for students. Over the past couple of years. And so more often than not, um, at the, at the table, when people have a discussion, there's been sort of a. Probably a little bit more of a leaning towards, let's keep this in place for a little bit longer until we meet again. So my hope is, is that once, as we're recovering from COVID, we get back up to the numbers that we were prior to COVID. Um, additionally, all of our K five special education teachers and many of our teachers in the middle school that are sped teachers. Have some more specialized training in reading, um, using a multisensory approach such as PAF or Wilson. And our K three teachers also have training in foundations. And the reason I highlight this is because one of the primary roles in elementary special education is getting students to read. Um, and and often if a child is having trouble, we, we figure it out pretty early on in their educational process. And we have systems in place pretty rapidly to both assess if a child is having difficulty and to put those supports in place right away. If, if the student needs a more specialized approach to reading instruction. Again, the numbers of students needing um that specialized reading instruction elementary versus secondary, I'll get to a little later on in the slides. But you can see that that decreases over time. Um, this year we are back to the stat that we were very proud to report prior to COVID. It's just that. And every building, over sixty percent of our students with special needs are in general education settings. Eighty percent or more their day after being in cohorts last year. So when I show you that graph in a moment, you're gonna see that last year. That percentage dipped because we cohorted students and they were not with their typical peers. Um, but we are now back to those uh pre. Am I?
Stacy, this is Ray.
And everyone's still hearing me.
Stacy, this is Ray. Sorry about that. Um, your, your video was freezing here a little bit. And so I'm sorry, I'm just gonna leave the video off, see if I make sure you get your audio, if that's okay.
I like the picture better than myself in person anyway.
I did not say that.
You didn't, I did.
Thank you, Stacy.
No problem. Okay. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is, um, I know sometimes the other reason why. Parents can sometimes be fearful of their student being declassified is because they feel like they're going to lose those supports. That they've had that have made them so successful. And um, an interesting point to note is that any student that has an IEP during their time. In SMS or SHS, SHS with us, excuse me, keeps those accommodations and uh for program and test mods. Even if they get to classified, it is a, it's a um, a thing called document D that we keep track of. And the guidance counselors let teachers know that these students are still entitled to these accommodations and modifications, even if they no longer have an IEP. So it's just an interesting piece of information I wanted to share because I'm not, I'm not certain everybody realizes that children get to keep those even when they're declassified. Kevin, if you wouldn't mind going forward for me. So um, classification rates have played, stayed pretty stable. In New York State, about eighteen percent of students are classified as students with disabilities. And in Westchester County, it's fifteen percent. We're always right sort of smack in the middle of that. We've been at sixteen or seventeen back and forth. For the past several years. Um, and so we've remained pretty stable there. Are, um, we also, as I mentioned to you last year, have several performance indicators that the state asks us to report on. This year, uh, the indicator is number eight and that is parent involvement. And so um, what that required was that surveys be sent home to all of our families that have children with IEPs. Um, there's a certain requirement for the number filled out that we must achieve. We have already achieved that. So I'm, I'm proud to say that. Um, and but we have the whole year to collect them. So even though we've already achieved the goal, there's still plenty of time for people to return their surveys. And I hope that they will continue to do that because in the summer we get a report. Um, and that it report lets us know. Um, the extent to which parents felt that the district facilitated their involvement in that IEP process as a means of improving the services. For their children. Um, and so we didn't have an indicator last year. We, it's a seven year rotation with one year being off. So next, this time next year when I report to you, I hope to be able to report the results of that parent survey. Um, which we are just collecting this year, but we've already met the goal for how many. So I'm hopeful we'll get good information. I know, um, each year as we talk about our budget and our staffing needs, sometimes a question arises about. You know, why have our staff numbers in special education not decreased at that same le- level as our student enrollment? And number of students with disabilities. And the, the very simple answer to that is that. Our goal of having more students in general education classes with their peers more of the time. Requires more resources so those students can be successful. So while numbers of students have gone down. Um, it has allowed us to have um more programs available, co-teach available for more students. Um, and also trying some different methods of co-teach which we tried prior to COVID that we hope to possibly get back to next year.
Stacy, I think on the next slide, as Kevin slides that up, that really, you think you speak to it pretty clearly here about the increasing.
Yeah, so you can see, um, I hope you can see on the red there that um each bar represents a different year. Um, yellow being eighteen nineteen, red being nineteen twenty, the blue being twenty twenty one, and then the darker red being. Twenty one, twenty two. And then you see our four buildings. Last year, you'll notice that um, we, we dipped in our ability to have students in a general ed setting for eighty percent or more of their day. Because our students in our twelve one one, twelve one two and eight one two programs. Were co-horted last year, which means they stayed with that group of students all day and were not with their general education peers. And you can see that's a significant dip from where we were. And now this year, because we are able to have students mix into classrooms again, we are back up at that. Um, over the blue bar represents that sixty percent line that New York State requires. We are over that in all four of our school buildings this year.
Thanks, Lucy.
Um. This is our percent of students with disabilities compared to our total population. Um, what we look for is that the, the students with disabilities are. Equal to or less than the total population. You can see that um, that I've broken it down by the different um demographics that are reported in our student reporting system. So um, Asian, black or African American, Hispanic or Latino, multiracial and white. I have a three year view here. Um, the bar on the left of each color is the total population. And then the bar to the right is the students with disabilities. Um, you might remember, if you look at the Hispanic and Latino population, that a few years ago, our. Students with disabilities was over the total population. We did change some of our practices in terms of how we evaluate students. And that number is now equal. Um, and you can see that in terms of um, most of these demographics, we've stayed pretty, pretty flat last year to this year. These numbers are based on the numbers that we have in the system. The only one that's based on state data right now is the nineteen twenty based on the New York State um ed data. If they're always a couple of years behind in their reporting. So as they update their numbers based on a full year's worth of data and final reporting from us. I update these for you. Um, so you can see that these are, that from last year to this year, that's remained pretty flat.
Stacy, I'm not sure I'm understanding how to read this graph. When I was looking at it last night.
Okay.
Um.
Seen this before.
No, I, I don't get it. Like, for example, look at the white, you have eighty three, eighty two, both in yellow. Eighty one and eighty one in red and eighty one and eighty one in. Uh, in. My aqua, whatever. I don't, I don't know how to interpret that.
So the bar, so if we take the two yellow bars first.
Mm hmm.
The two yellow bars are representing nineteen twenty data. So in nineteen twenty, the total population of white students of the district was eighty three percent.
Got it.
And, and the bar next to that represents eighty two percent of all students with disabilities were white.
Ah, okay. All right, got it.
Okay, and then the following is for twenty twenty one and then the la- aqua is for twenty one, twenty two.
So it's total population and then the second bar is the population of just the students with disabilities.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, so I'm sorry, Joe, thank you. Would it make more sense than Stacy if the second one had like a squiggly through it or something? To delineate the two, because now that you're saying that, Joe, I'm looking at it saying, wait, they are the same. Is that what you're saying, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't distinguish. I didn't know what it was.
Like you put polka dots or like, you know, stripes or something through it to show that they're different, yeah?
Yeah.
Sure.
So in other words, with, in the black population, one percent of our students are of total student body and black population is. Uh, black and one percent of the, of the students who are black or have disabilities. Basically, it's just like, okay, so it's showing like, uh, you don't have like. Uh, eighty seven percent and then forty two percent. It's all kind of comparable.
Well, and what would be more concerning frankly is if, let's, let's, you know, as I pointed out, that um twenty, that nineteen twenty. Hispanic and Latino population, you don't want the student with disabilities number being higher.
Mm hmm.
You want it being equal to or less than.
Got it.
This is proportionality, right? We're looking at proportions, right?
Correct.
Yeah, disability has no discrimination, basically.
Correct. That's what, that's what we're, that's what this graph is, is showing, yes.
Right.
Kevin, if you wouldn't mind moving it forward? So um, E N L students make up one and a half percent of our total population and two percent of our students with disabilities.
What does E N L stand for, Stacy? I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, um, E N, uh, English language learner. So for students for whom English is not their primary language.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so this is a statistic that we'd like to improve. Um, again, we would like this to be equal, right? We, we don't wanna see that. More students that are in the population are being represented in our students with disabilities. It's a small percentage, but it's something we're keeping an eye on.
But is, is a language disability uh more in that number or not? Speaking, I mean.
Are, you mean for students for who, that are E N L students that are with an IEP is language disability, the primary disability?
Yeah.
Um, that's a good question. I don't, I don't have that information here, but I can find out. I'm writing, I'm writing questions while you're, while Kevin's scrolling. Okay, um, so again, this is, this is by gen- a breakdown by gender. This actually improved a little bit from last year. Um, only slightly, but it's an improvement. So um, you'll notice that the total population of. Of males in our schools is fifty one percent and females is forty nine percent. And then the students with disabilities, SWD is right under that. Last year, it was at, um. It was sixty point two. So it, it has improved slightly. Um, and obviously then the females were at thirty nine. Um, so you know, we wanna just be mindful that we're not. Uh, I'm going to say over classifying males. Um, that, you know, that is, that's why we take a look at these statistics. That's why I bring them to you because I'm, you know, if I'm looking at it as director, I want you to be aware of what. We as an Office of Special Services are, are aware of and, and monitoring.
Stacy, is this normal though of general population? I mean, is, is that, for some reason, is there just a gender difference?
Yeah, Chad, that's a good question. I think, I, I can't remember if we talked about this last year, Stacy, but it is typically across nationally. It's about two thirds. Uh, to one third, uh, so about sixty five ish percent to thirty five percent uh females, sixty five males. So. It's well within that, if not a little bit better like Stacy was saying, so, yep.
Yeah, and more, more interesting question beyond that is, what is the classification types? That is represented in that larger number?
Yeah, the majority of our students um fall under three main categories. Other health impaired, learning disability and speech and language impaired are the three biggest categories of disability that are represented on our IEPs.
Right, so, so the male students have uh more in which category of this three?
Um, that, that's fairly equal. There's not a huge, you know, difference in terms of. Um, the breakdown of, of the different disabilities. It's just that more males are classified than females. But as Ray said, we're. We're not out of range with what, what happens across the state and actually across the nation.
In other words, there's no educational uh issue in general. It's, it's really just disability. Right? It's not, for example, uh, the male students uh have more difficulty in say, speech. Uh, some reason, we, we have to uh change our curriculum or somehow to help in that direction.
We, we haven't seen that be, um, as an issue.
Okay, good.
If you could scroll, Kevin, thanks. So, um, another piece of information, um, about six point seven percent of our students with IEPs are placed out of district. That's typically, um, and I, and I broke it down a little. Um, um, in the background information that I sent to all of you, I broke down a little more about the types of programs that students. Um, attend for those. Those students tend to be students for whom their emotional. Um, needs, behavioral needs, or sometimes their um. Behavioral communication and life skills needs, for example, if students are severely autistic. Um, those tend to be the students that we, we place out of districts because there are better programs for them than what we can offer in-house. Um, one of the questions that the board had asked me was. Um, for a breakdown of the different types of programs that we have and approximate cost. Uh, when Ray is going to laugh at me and so will Chris, because when I say approximate cost, the only thing that I put in here in terms of cost. Was um, was teacher and TA salary. Um, with benefits. And there are some other, you know, other obviously incidental things that, not incidental, significant, you know, materials and things like that that I did not include in this. I, I only included just very um high level staffing numbers. But the breakdown is here in term, and I went from least restrictive to most restrictive. And to remind you what that is. This New York State defines least restrictive as the least amount of time with a special education teacher. We define it a little differently. We define least restrictive as time, the most time spent in a general education setting. And the reason why that's important is in terms of integrated co-teach, right? Because if you look at the continuum. Co-teach has two teachers for the whole day together in most instances, particularly in elementary school. And the state would consider that a more restrictive environment because of special ed teachers with the students all day. But the reason why we gravitate towards that is because it allows students to be with their general education peers and general education setting. For the entire day without needing to be removed. A small distinction, but one that we hold high in our values. So I always like to point that out.
Stacy, I'm sorry. If those students were not in ICT classes, because you're saying it, where would they be? Would they be in self, special classes?
Yes.
And how, and if, if you compared the, the, the structure, the pacing of the class in an ICT versus. A non-ICT class, how would that be different? Like, let's pick any subject, living environment.
Right, so. That we still, we still do have special class, right? We have students who are, who are in a special class environment and, and we really have to um. Distinguish because in living environment, for your example, Mary Rose, in the high school, there, there is only a co-teach option. All students must take that class or a class in living environment in order to get a region's diploma. So they do not, we only have a co-teach option or a support option of children getting a skills class later on. There is no special class pullout for a living environment. Right? But on the flip side, for algebra, let's say, also. Right? But on the flip side, for algebra, let's say, also a high school requirement. We have co-teach algebra for students, but we also have a two-year algebra option where students are in a smaller student-teacher ratio, and they're doing their algebra instruction over two years as opposed to one, still getting the graduation requirement, but at a slower pace with more practice and skills-based support put in.
Yeah, because I just I just wanted to be clarified to the community that an I C T class is not, not only is it reducing this teacher-to-student ratio, which it is, because you have two adults in the classroom, the 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 modalities of how kids learn, the pacing may be a little bit different. Uh, the the structure should be a little bit different.
Right, so in an I C T class, uh both in elementary school and in high school for the classes that we offer I C T in, A, there's the student-teacher ratio that you mentioned, and the special ed teacher becomes the, I'm going to say, expert on um study skills, strategies, how to make um graphic organizers and help with note-taking, which which helps all the students, but is in particular goal-oriented toward the student with special needs. Whereas the general education teacher or the science teacher is the content specialist. And so the two of them work together to make sure that all of the students in the classroom can get that content, while also getting any supports they need to be able to access that content.
Uh, Stacy, this this chart says ninety-three percent of students are in the district. That really uh we should commend on your effort, and this is a good good thing for our school district. But on the six point seven percent that are placed outside, those students, are they mostly in the category of the consultant teacher?
No. Um, so the students who are placed out out of district are students who are in residential placements, students for whom um they need a very small, maybe a six to two um ratio or need um a very significant amount of behavioral supports because of their um whether it be because of autism or an emotional disability.
I see.
They're students who need a much smaller student-teacher ratio and and often a different mode of instruction altogether.
Uh, explain the consultant teacher. Uh, so the what of what sort of a category or classification that requires the consultant teacher?
Yeah, so consultant teacher is actually um can happen in two different ways. It can happen either directly or indirectly. A consultant teacher direct means that a special education teacher pushes into a class. It can be daily or every other day to support the student in accessing the curriculum. They work with the teacher to know what's coming up. They may help students with their with their note-taking and their organization and their study supports. Um, but they're not needed every day. Um, and they're only needed some of the time. So students are mostly independent, but they may need some small group support periodically, and that teacher goes in to provide that.
Yeah, Ife, I think one thing that might be confusing is the top is mentioning out-of-district students, but the chart below is actually in district.
Consultant means internal consultant. I know, I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. So so Kevin, if you scroll up enough, so that, yeah, they're two separate things. The six point seven out of district is not related to this graph under.
No, I understand. Thank you for your explanation.
There you go. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to make that confusing.
Right.
Um, so, and then the other important thing to note is that, for example, the related service only, those are students on their I U Ps that only get something like counseling, O T, P T, speech. And so you noted that I noted here that we only have twenty-two students in the district for whom that is the case. But I I want you to know that the the staff, the nineteen staff members of P T O T speech psychologists, they service not only those twenty-two students, but all of the students underneath that also. Because many of those students also have things like speech, O T, P T, counseling on their I U Ps. So it's not as simple as just saying these teachers only help these students.
So so the cost column is not really accurate.
It it's it's bigger than, that's why I said it's very approximate, because it helps more students than I have just listed next to it. Just like consultant, the consultant teacher learning and integrated co-teach in the high school and middle school, many of those teachers do multiple tasks. So I could be a math teacher in the middle school. I may teach a self-contained twelve-one-one class. I may teach two co-teach math classes, and then I may push into a science and social studies teach class as a consultant teacher later on in the day.
Yeah, Stacy, maybe I can suggest you, instead of putting those dollars in there, you can use uh raise fractional F Es. Is it called F Es?
F T E.
No, the the.
Full-time equivalent for teacher?
Equivalent, yeah. F T E or F E, yeah. Because that would be more uh easy to understand how many uh people, you know, personnel we really require for different categories.
Stacy, it appears from looking at the the numbers there, I'm just doing a quick add of what you have on the total approximate cost. Yeah, those all up, that tops eleven million dollars, which is basically in excess of twelve percent of our budget, but is that accurate? Am I reading?
No, no, that's not. That's why we're saying.
Yeah, I'm I'm confused.
So so know that when we do the special education budget, right, that all the faculty and staff budgeting that um that Ray and Chris present to you, the special ed people are in there, right? So it's not it's not on top of what's part of the budget. It's incorporated inside the budget with the rest of the staff.
Yeah, Joe, that's why we should use like point one, point two, point three, point five, point eight F Es instead of the dollar sign, so you will know which category has how many staff people that are required.
Okay, well, how much are we spending with respect to special ed and how much are we getting back from the state? It's kind of hard to tell states from from these numbers here.
Joe, maybe what we'll do is I'll go ahead and see if Chris can drop in there a little bit, and I will too. Where, um, just from a high-level lens, again, I think the approximate cost for the overall special education program is is accurate there. Um, again, those those folks are doing many uh different things. And so um as far as the instructional side, Stacy, I think we're four and sixty-five, four and seventy students that have I U P services this year. Again, as we looked at percentage-wise, that represents approximately seventeen percent of the overall student body. And then Chris, maybe if we're looking at, you know, that the cost center is hard to break out there because there's other things other than the staffing, but that staffing, uh, we have a staffing breakout for the staffing piece there, uh, Chris.
Yeah, and for board members under, you know, we have another file that had some more of the exact facts and figures that has a little bit more detail on some of the the financial breakdown and stuff also.
Yeah, I think, you know, trying to let the people know what we're spending and how we're spending it. I just want to make sure that we're we're clear, because I know in our budget, we have a little more of a, you know, structured breakout of this is what we're spending, this is what we're getting back, this kind of, I don't know, I'm not, for me, I'm not seeing it clearly. So I apologize.
Joe, I I think what's missing, at least for me, is that the the services that are provided are mandated by an I E P, which is a legal document, right? We all know this. I'm just, I know that you know this. But it's the legal document that our kids have when they have special services, right? And so the services that we're providing are mandated by the state, by that legal document, and a portion of those services are paid for by the state. Right? And and they must be provided. I think what Stacy is sharing here is that some of those supports are overlapping into general ed classrooms whereby those specialists are also helping general ed students while also fulfilling the I E P mandates. Did I get that sort of right, or did I completely ruin that?
No, that's that's right.
Okay, so I think maybe clearly delineating, because it does look like a big, you know, chunk of the budget, how how this actually works and how it's both supporting our students who need these supports, but also um you know, what portion comes from the state, that would be, I think.
And we'll, as we certainly move forward with our twenty-two, twenty-three budget planning, we'll have that detail in there. If you kind of have that visual back to um what the document is there for this year, we have anticipated expensive, that kind of pie graph is broken out. And you can see there for like this year for specifications, it's approximately fourteen million dollars we're spending this year for special education. So those elements will certainly be as we kind of build that for twenty-two, twenty-three, but uh, you know, please take a peek back at the, you know, public document, that short abridgity uh kind of document in the front. It breaks it out, what part is spent in special education. In that regard, it's talking about supplies and materials as well as, you know, the employees and things. So there's different ways to break it out, but Chris, anything you want to add there? I know we'll be bringing that forth as we start warming up uh next month with the budget uh stuff for twenty-two, twenty-three.
And not not much, not too much to add there, but yeah, we will, when we look to talk about this as we move forward in the budgeting process, we'll make sure we have a few slides that kind of clearly uh show the, you know, the costs and the amount of aid that we're receiving back for some of these services, just to make it a little more clear.
Perfect. That's a great point, too, capturing that aid, so we can show that at the same part. I I excellent missed that part, and I know Joe made that before too, so thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, and and I apologize. I I um I did add a slide to the background information that I did not put here. That does show the cost per student, um, public and private and and what we get back.
And Stacy, we may just take that and bring that up at the future meeting with budget. So thank you for doing that work already.
And and I know, um, you know, some of the question was, you know, when I was saying before about how we try to frontload students when they're younger, sometimes students need a one-to-one aid, whether it be for safety or for their learning or for health. Um, others, students may need some very specialized instruction, particularly in reading and sometimes in math. Um, other students may need a smaller staff-to-student ratio. So you can see on the on the underneath the the chart, the two little bar graphs I have here. Students in K five, the percent of our classified students needing specialized instruction and how that then shifts in seven to ten. So you can see thirty-two percent of our students in in elementary school get some kind of specialized instruction, whether it's a specialized reading program using the big ideas math rather than everyday math or needing even touch math or something different. And then when they get to seven through twelve, how they're able to experience a general education setting and general education math classes. And many of our students, which we'll show in the next graph in a moment, um, do graduate with region's diplomas, taking a full region's course load of courses once they hit the high school. So you'll see, um, I have it by specialized instruction. I have it by a s- a smaller stacked student ratio, and then I have the number of the percent of one-to-one aids um that students have as they're in elementary school. And then as it goes up, and you can see that all of those decrease over time as students build their independence and skills. And then lastly, um, Kevin, if you scroll up. So um the graduation outcomes rate, so our students with disabilities, we have a ninety-one point two percent graduation rate. Um, and then um the state takes some interesting data and interview students after they leave us um about how many of them are in either higher education, a training program, or employed. And um we have an eighty-nine percent rate there of students um fitting into one of those categories with only a close to three percent dropout rate for students with disabilities. Um, and I just want to share that I'm very involved at the high school level when students are at risk of dropping out um or when they're not fulfilling credits over time. And we try to do many, many things before that occurs. Um, we change class schedules. We tried to get them involved in B O Cs. There is a um a diploma program that students can test into and then take, which we used to call the G E D. It's now called the task and T A B. So we try to do a lot of things um before students do not get a diploma from us. Um, but unfortunately, you know, there there are still a few students for whom um that doesn't happen. But overall, our percentages of students graduating and then staying in higher ed or a training program employment is fairly high.
Stacy, I'm seeing that there are like ninety-one percent of students with disabilities who are graduating and eighty-nine percent who are going on to some form of higher ed training. And then we have a dropout of almost three percent. What happens to the six percent between the graduating rate and the dropout rate?
So.
Um, am I missing something?
No, some, a little, it's a little bit misrepresented because some children take longer than four years to graduate. So they're doing it just based on cohort models of children who are supposed to be in each year based on age. So we have some some students who stay with us till age twenty-one. So that's a little bit misrepresented in the numbers. Um, we have some students who go into the um the military that's not represented here. And then we also have um some students who either, you know, we we lose track of for whatever reason um after they after they leave us in summers. It could be because their families moved or just because we we they changed contact information and we're not in touch with them. We don't we don't know where they where they have landed.
And that's the six percent of missing um potential graduate rates.
All of those, all of those different categories represent that six percent.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be great. That's a great point, Lindsay. It'd be great to just show that on there, so we're not looking at wondering where the missing data is. You know, we we might not know the what actually, maybe not the specifics, but at least to see it on there, that'd be great.
Right, so the kids that don't, yeah, the ones that don't drop out, what are, why, you know, but don't graduate.
Yeah, like.
Four-year graduation rate. The ninety.
Yeah. And how does that, I guess the other.
Sorry, this is not good here.
Sorry, sorry. And I, my other question would be uh just, we see the numbers. What's our expectation or how does this compare to um, you know, other districts or the state, I guess, is what we often look at?
Um, I would say our graduation rate is is pretty high, first and overall, actually, you know, um. I want to say when I looked at the state site, the overall graduation rate, and Ray, correct if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong here, is it ninety, between ninety-four and ninety-six?
Um, it's a little, it's a little bit higher. It's uh typically between ninety-seven and ninety-eight. And your point is well taken before where it's a four-year uh number they're looking at. So some students may extend that beyond that piece too, so.
So these are the numbers that you're reporting to the state, yes?
Correct.
Got it.
So Stacy, I I could be wrong. I think you're just short of two hundred children, uh, you know, kind of at the high school um and things like that right now that have an I E P. Does that sound about right? And then maybe twelfth grade in a typical year, let me just ballpark, you're talking fifty or so kids and things like that. So saying, okay, out of the fifty students that graduation rate, that's what this this N is relatively small from the graduation rates that we're talking about. So, okay, fifty kiddos. Okay, so then if I have six percent, then I'm not sure exactly. There's not presented here talking about three kids. And so where 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 are those students? And I think your point, we have a couple of students that may not show up because they're with us a little bit longer, a student here. So again, I I think when we look at this for next year, we'll kind of put that end value on there so the board can see this. We're not talking about twenty-eight hundred kids in the school. We're talking about the graduation rates of the kids who graduated last year um kind of that had a a student with disability. So it's not the two hundred and sixty that are graduating is the portion thereof, so that the number just keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And so we'll do uh kind of add that little detail to that next year, so. Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it, and uh, thanks for uh letting me turn your camera off and all this stuff. We heard you very loud and clear, at least on my side, so thanks a lot.
Sure.
I appreciate it. So hopefully uh next year, uh, when when Stacy comes back online, we're um, again, not sharing the evening with another very important topic, but as we've always intended, kind of have this work session be singular topic there. So I know we did go a little bit later than typical, but uh certainly with our COVID update necessary, and then this piece we want to do. So I'm glad we were able to get both of those in our work session this evening, so, so. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So thank you, Stacy. Um, all right, so we just have uh one quick board action item tonight. Um, be it resolved at the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools hereby approves the attached business agenda.
Oh, so, second.
Um, is there any discussion before?
Anything we need? It's just the one item there for the contract for the U P K program that's starting up in less than three weeks now. So we're we're excited and the board did accept the proposal from the Y M C A back in the meeting in November. So this is just to formalize the contract.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed, abstained? Okay. Move on. All right, so Ray, if there's not anything else, then we've we've gotten to the point of public comment at the meeting. Um, and so just a reminder, so you, I, you know, you have to raise your hands on the screen and we'll raise you to a panelist. Um, we are still sticking to, you know, asking that you limit any comments to um three minutes. Um, and uh, please, I make sure you're identified yourself. So if your name isn't on there, if you have somebody else's name or something, um, just make sure that your name is identified to us. And uh, we do like to just know if you're a resident of the school district or or not when you're speaking, so we can keep that into consideration when um addressing it too.
So first up, excuse me. So first up, we have Anna Valentin. She's had her hand up most of the meeting. So I hope she's still there.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Sorry, I just lost sight of everyone. So I'm Anna Valentin, and I have my children at home right now. My concern is related to COVID. I work at Montefiore Medical Center. So I've seen the worst of all of the pandemic, unfortunately. My question is, given that obviously schools are strained right now, resources are tight, staffing, tests, everything. I I want to understand the logic behind not supporting children who thrive and have demonstrated that they thrive learning from home during this time of the spike. I'm not asking that schools be closed. I don't think that's the right solution. What I'm seeing is if you have the resources, which you obviously have, because we did this last year, and there are some children that did well during the e-learning period, not all, but some kids did. Why not lessen the strain on the system by allowing some children who can and do well learning remotely do so at least for a month until the spike drops? It seems completely logical. Some schools are doing this. The hospital, I have all of my staff working from home, those who can, who can do their work fully from the computer. Just I don't understand the hesitancy. I don't understand the pushback. Some of the points that Dr. Barsh made had no relevance to Somers. You know, I understand schools are a sanctuary for children who need to eat or don't have heat at home, or there's gun violence or domestic violence. I get that. I'm from the Bronx. I see. But what I'm saying is there there's different circumstances here. You know, the recommendations are made generally as recommendations, but you can apply those recommendations across the board to every community across the United States because or across even New York State, because there are different circumstances everywhere. So I just want to understand why, if we can do this with the resources, why aren't we doing this?
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I can understand those concerns. We don't really do a question and answer right now, but maybe when we hear all the comments, if Dr. Blanche wants to chime in with any extra explanations, we can certainly do that. So thanks.
Okay, so next we have Maria Laverde.
Hi, everybody. I'm trying to turn my video on. Hold on. Okay, so I think Anna summarized beautifully. One of the points I wanted to make it, and it's why not allow distance, the distance learning option. Also for kids that are not officially quarantined, but that want to be safe because they think they may have had an exposure. I think that should be an option. For example, my kid, we we not we're not officially quarantined, but we travel to Florida. So we're keeping home. And we were taught, just because we want to be safe, we're not sick, we're testing later this week. But we wanna, we don't want to expose anybody in the community. So we're trying to do the right thing by not sending the kids to school, even though they could go. And we were told that no remote option will be available for us because we're not officially quarantined and the people that are quarantined have priority. So I think that can be reevaluated. And another, my other comment is about test to stay and the random tests. And while I don't agree with the test to stay, and I've sent a couple of emails about it. I wonder why this option is not given to vaccinated students for the perfect example is someone who may have had an exposure, it's vaccinated, but wants to be safe and protect the community. Why can't that person opt for test to stay instead of voluntarily quarantining at home? And same with vaccinating with random vaccine, random test on vaccinated students. I understand that once the student is vaccinated, there's no more random testing at school, even when the parents sign for it. And that's it. Thank you so much. I know you guys are doing the best you can. And I appreciate your hard work. There's no easy answer.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Laverde. And for both the both people that have spoken so far, I appreciate your proactiveness towards trying to help protect the community. And maybe we'll get some commentary towards the ends to help answer some of your questions or concerns. So anybody else?
Yes, you have Rosalyn Galino.
Hi, I just wanted to touch really quickly on something Dr. Barsh mentioned. When he talks about one of the reasons that schools need to remain open was learning loss. I fully appreciate that our schools are open. My kids love going to school. They are sick of me. They are sick of my lessons. They really appreciate the social and the athletic environments that come from school. But there was not a learning loss last year. My kids did learn the academics that they needed through the remote instruction and the hybrid model. But my kids also learned that teachers are humans, that staff have responsibilities outside of school. They saw their teachers as complete beings. They saw their teachers make connections with them beyond academics. I I feel for the teachers who listened to this meeting and heard him mention learning loss. Because if anything, my kids, and I know they're not alone, had augmentation to their learning in that they learned beyond just the walls of a classroom. And I think it's important to note that there was no real parameter of exactly what constituted learning. And I think that that's something we really need to consider is that our kids have learned an immense amount about how to be part of a community, how to see someone through more than one aspect, through more than one lens, and how to relate to each other across different forums through this entire pandemic. And I think that's something that should be discussed and noted as an achievement throughout it. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that perspective and definitely a reminder that, you know, the experience is different for all kids and what each family takes away from our different experiences needs to be considered. Anybody else?
I see Anna Valentin, Valentin has her hand up again. I'm not sure how you want to handle that.
Yeah, we typically, I didn't say it at the beginning, typically, we try to have you only speak something once. It doesn't look like we have a lot of people. So if it's if it's something new that you think is really important, I'm okay with it. But generally speaking, we try to avoid repeats to the mic.
For consistency, Heidi, I just want to be fair and equitable. We have not done that in the past, just trying to be totally transparent. Joe advocated for this at some point, and we all sort of gave him a hard time. So just.
That's true. So you know what? I'm going to ask that if you have a further question, maybe you can email it to either the board or to Dr. Blanch. So we keep with that consistency. Sorry, I didn't say that at the beginning. All right, anybody else? That reminder of consistency, Lindsay. Okay, looks like that's all we have. Anybody else?
So if it's all right, I just kind of talked to a few of those things with the board here a little bit. In particular, one of those things about the ability to have the resources, the capability to go to a choice option remote. I would say that's not very accurate. As the board knows, we had almost forty additional employees hired in the district last year to help make the whole Zoom piece helpful and optional, in particular, at our elementary levels and up through. And then also the other resources that we perhaps if we were dealing with everything we are right now. And I think our last speaker, Rosalyn, spoke to about the fact of what our teachers are working through in their own lives. And so our teachers who perhaps are home because they're COVID positive themselves, so their family is, they're they're really not accessible as they really were in the past before. They want to be here. I had a chance to meet with our teachers each building by building the other day, but they're they're just trying to make, you know, their own homes kind of get back online. So we're having to bring all of our possible permanent substitutes online. Anybody we can possibly get out of the, there are special assignments, be it an AIS teacher or something like that, to come and support it. So all those resources we do have are marshaled right now to keep our children in school. And again, as Dr. Barsh before, that really is our number one target. And with us having, you know, depend upon the school eighty five percent plus or minus of our students in school yesterday and today, that's where we marshal our resources to do that. And if we do have a student who is positive COVID or was exposed to a positive COVID student right now, that is again where that test and stay program can assist with that person coming in and say, look, I was exposed or want to kind of test you on those days coming in on a serial basis, as Dr. Bar said, so we can watch and monitor that part. As far as how that program works, that's not a determination up to myself. That is something that specifically comes from the New York Department of Health and then finalized or final details to the Westchester Department of Health. So they determine vaccinated or unvaccinated. What is your response back to those individuals? And so that is certainly something that's not up to us as a district. And I think another spoke, the speaker spoke to about the randomized testing. That is a perfect example of that is a county run program. That is not run by the school district proper. We were told earlier in the fall with the recovery funds that were awarded to the county that we would be contacted. And we would be told what who our vendor was to do this work. And Matt Carr and his team have been doing, his team of him himself and his and his best friend himself have been working on this one identifying that group. So we were told our vendor, our vendor said, this is how the process is, and that's a pool testing process. So we, and here's who can be in the program, who can't. So depend upon the vendor, depend upon the contract, the vendor has with the county, not with us, is what we were told kind of to do in those areas. So that is a part that we're seeing in that regard. And I couldn't agree with more about, and I like the way you summarized it up too, Heidi, that that experience is diff, it was different for last year for the whole spectrum. And we know some students did extremely well with that. And we also know that it was a struggle for many other students. And so having them in our schools proper is the number piece. And again, I think we heard that from Dr. Barst this morning or this afternoon, as well as the other pieces about our teachers. So that being in with children is definitely a good educational experience and a positive piece that we're seeing. And we do have some pieces at our disposal that, again, we're marshaling all resources possible to go ahead and teach the kids that are in front of us physically and have that main be maintained as much as possible. So I'm not sure if you heard something, maybe a clarifying question, Heidi, that I can address. Maybe you heard, I tried to take some notes and hopefully I got most of us out of the just.
Yeah, no, I was just, as you were talking about the the randomized testing. That's I'm a little confused because so can vaccinated students be tested randomly? I know that didn't seem to be a criteria when we had the opportunity to sign up for randomized testing. And can families like that didn't sign up before? Is there going to be an opportunity to join in? Like now that we seem to need, there's so many more cases and people are looking for tests more, there may be more willingness to participate in the randomized testing just for that opportunity to get an eat, like have a shot at getting a screening test along the way.
Sure. And I'll go ahead and I see if man is still there. And I just want to make sure I don't miss misspeak any of the groundwork that he has been laying over the last couple of years on this. So the the part of the test to stay option for individuals, if they are vaccinated is is there's not a piece there that if they're already vaccinated, they're they're okay. One of the pieces that I know, man, I think you did work with even our health committee last night is if there's a symptom perhaps, and they're not exactly, we can help with that. But Matt, I'll go ahead and have you hit a couple of those items.
Yeah. So I guess for for clarity, there's kind of two things at play there. There's surveillance testing, which is available to anybody in the school district. We did see a drop in interest because of the whole pool testing component to that. Quadrant Biosciences is a company that comes into our district every Monday, and they conduct saliva-based PCR tests. The thing is, is that the tests, the samples are collected and tested in groups of twelve. If the group comes back positive, then all parts of anybody who who was a participant in that pool has to stay out of school until those samples can be retested. The the test to stay component, which is driven by Westchester County DOH, does specifically say that it's only for unvaccinated individuals, unvaccinated students. The other piece that Dr. Blanch referenced too, and we discussed this at the health committee last night, was as everybody's experiencing, it is very difficult now to get access to a PCR test. So we we spoke about since we did receive approximately three thousand rapid tests from Westchester County this week, we are going to be able to test students and staff members if they have symptoms. Let's say, you know, I'm just not feeling right today, but I'm not so sick that I can't come to work. Okay, let's come in and visit with our nurse. They'll do a fifteen minute rapid test with you. If it comes back negative, you can go back to school.
Yeah, and Matt, and I think that's a key part again, why those tests to stay protocols and the tests we did receive were very critical to keep those kind of with these different programs moving. So it's they're going, they're going quick. And so we're, as a superintendent group, we're already asking if the state will be replenishing those those tests for us. And so we hope to hear that in the coming days.
Okay, but the surveillance testing is for vaccinated and unvaccinated students. So if your child is vaccinated, they can also be part of the surveillance testing.
Correct.
That's correct. And you know, we can put out another feeler. We've done it a couple of times throughout the fall, Heidi, and without any success at all really of trying to get more people to can participate, but we can send that out again, of course.
Okay.
And I think one of the pieces, I think somebody had spoke earlier about concern maybe that I was exposed and I'm not sure if I'm sick or not yet. There, as since the beginning, there has been a very clear piece of, are you a contact of a known positive? If we tried to go ahead and say, well, I I I think I'm going to get sick in the next few days and say, okay, then I've got siblings or I've got there's just, there's no way we could be able to manage that or test that or be able to go ahead and and do that without saying you're a known contact of a positive person. Then we start our quarantining processes. Were you in this certain distance? How long did you have your mask on? Are you vaccinated, unvaccinated? We have to start from that absolute known positive, and that that one has not changed since the beginning.
So to that point, known positives in your same household, if vaccinated, are we allowing them to come in if they have no symptoms?
So Matt, I'll go ahead and let you do this. I know this is a part again, I think, some of the conversation with the health committee, and there's two parts. I'll see if Matt can address. One is for our employees and those members in that situation with a known positive in the house. And then the other would be for families that have children in the schools.
Right. So if if an employee has a known positive in their household, then they can isolate. That's one of the the big pieces to this. You have to commit that you're going to be able to isolate from that positive. Then we'll have the employee come in and test with our with our rapid tests so we can get them back to work because of our critical staffing needs at this point in time. And again, it comes down to supply of tests. We're going to ask that students, if you have a known positive in your household, that you stay out for the five days. On day six, you come in, stop into the nurse's office, test, and then come back to school as long as your test is negative.
Oh, so that 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 will be five days now, or that's five days after the Department of Health approves that?
And it's five vaccinated? If I'm vaccinated?
I'm sorry, how do you say it one more time?
Sorry. Yeah, let me just clarify that first. The five days, my understanding before that that was not approved for students. That's only for critical staff only. We're still on ten days.
Correct.
Across the board. So is it with students in that scenario? You know, is it, can you just clarify, is it five days or ten days? And then to Heidi's next question, you know, does that change for vaccinated persons on that?
So if you're a vaccinated student and you have a positive in your household, we're going to ask that you stay home for five days. And on day six, you come in, you test, as long as it's negative, you come back.
Great, okay. Unvaccinated would be out.
Because you are a contact of a positive, you have to serve the full
Ten days.
Quarantine period.
Yeah.
And that is the part that I think Matt mentioned before is that CDC has changed that, but we have not gotten direction to change that from the state or the county level. Or if if you're, you know, exposed to a positive, you're unvaccinated, you know, CDC is kind of changing some of that, those rules, but we haven't gotten any updates on any of that. CDC is kind of changing some of that, those rules, but we haven't gotten any updates on any of that.
For unvaccinated only is what we haven't changed it for, but for vaccinated, we're at five.
Vaccinated is at five. It used to be, we're again working with Dr. Barsh and Matt and the team. We would say come back on a day six with a negative PCR, but they're just, just not available. Dr. Barsh. Said, look, you can do the same thing. Just use your rapid test to check those kids coming back in.
And, and to Heidi's point earlier about, you know, communicating. We're going to work on, you know, because these are pretty decent changes. We're going to work on getting a communication sheet that's pretty clear for the community to refer to.
Thank you, Matt, very much. Thank you, Heidi.
Okay, so I think if that addresses questions, then we're on to board comments. Any board comments?
Okay, I'll start. I think. We certainly want to bring kids back to school. That's our objective. And I think most majority. Students or families that want to go back to school. However, under the circumstances, particularly this Omicron situation, it seems to. Me after hearing Dr. Bosch and others talk. We do have to think about the, the option of volunteer. Sort of a remote learning. If, if students or families volunteer want to do remote learning. I understand Dr. Blanch's concern of a financial impact with last year, we have to hire people so on. But that was a mandated remote learning situations. So. In an optional thing, perhaps particularly if a, a, a family and, and the teacher can reach. Agreement that a student actually better off doing the. Remote learning in a one month's period. That suddenly is a positive thing from the, you know, Omicron situation point of view. So I don't know whether our administration could do a little thinking about this. Define a, a policy for this month. Because I think some parents may have a, a good point. If they travel, they exposed or they have. Tested positive, one family and, you know, one siblings in a family, so on. It's very complicated. So. Rather than try to be so rigid and causing, you know. Doesn't help this overall situation. We probably could be a little flexible. And I'm sure our teacher is also willing to be flexible in, in order to get this whole thing over with, in a sense. That if we can see a rapid decreasing in a month and everything goes to normal. And that would be, you know, everybody's desire. So I just want to make that point.
I'll, I'll just let the board finish and I'll adjust a couple of things in my comments if that's all right.
Sure.
Thanks.
Other board comments?
I just want to compliment the, the administration for all the amazing work they've done in keeping kids in school. And I, I don't have children in the school now myself. I can only imagine the frustration and angst that. Parents must be feeling, especially those with young children. Going through, going through all of this. It has to be very frustrating. I mean, the. The information changes daily. You don't know who to believe or what to believe and. All I could tell you is you got to look at the history of the last year plus that. Our administration has, has been able to perform. And I think you just got to rely on. What they're telling you until they're no longer able to perform satisfactorily. I think that's all that. A parent can do under these circumstances, especially considering all the mixed information and you might hear something yesterday that now. Something new comes out today you haven't heard and what you heard yesterday is old news. So it's just really hard to keep on, on top of this, but that's what our administration is doing. Keeping on top of things and trying to act as, as effectively and efficiently as possible. Under the circumstances, which isn't an easy thing to do.
Anybody else?
You have Nick Henry's.
Oh, go ahead, Nick.
No, I was going to say the same thing, Joe. I think, I think, God, this is so hard. I mean, there's no one decision that. Makes everybody happy and there's no one decision that is right. And I think we're doing the best that we can with the, with the. The limited resources we have. And I do appreciate Somers for doing what it's been able to do. For the last two years and still continue to work on things that really do matter outside of COVID. Because I think COVID can take enough time out of one's day to say, that's all we work on. And I, and I appreciate that we still focus on. What truly is important, like the, the teaching and learning that happens day in and day out. And still focus on contact tracing and quarantining and all of those things. So I, I also, I mean, I, I. I know how much work is going into all of this. And I, I thank everybody involved in the nurses, teachers, administration, parents. I mean, it's, this is, this is a long haul. I'm hoping that. We're at the end at some point, but thank you for everything.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I would say, man, last. When we finished the session, I, I sure had a lot of hope. That by the time we hit January. We wouldn't have to wear masks anymore. Things would be returning to, you know, just the way, the way we expect to live our human life. But you know, the reality is reality and I, I completely agree. Let's, let's do everything we can to keep kids in school in person. I, I. I value that highly and, and I absolutely agree with the district to keep doing that. We, we know. As Dr. Barsh said right at the beginning. It, it used to be the focus was on keeping. What was on transmission and making sure that we didn't have transmission. You know, we, we do what we can. We don't want people to get sick. But the new variant shows us that, yeah, you're not going to be able to fully control that. So it, it, but it's something that. The outcomes that, that we're hearing about are, are. Not of the grave concern that they had been. Earlier and then I think we just probably know a lot. Have, have a lot more data now. So, but what. I wrestle with this a lot, but, but I think. We're wearing a mask, wearing it as well as, as we can and then reminding our kids. To keep them on and, you know, to do your best to. It, it helps everybody out. And, and the more we can do that, the, the faster and, and healthier that we'll, we'll get through this. You know, I, I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the end game is here. I don't know at what point this darn virus is just. Another virus that's out there. I, I do know that our nurses. Before COVID. If you had the flu, if you had flu symptoms, they wouldn't want you to come in school. That, that's nothing new. So, so knowing that we have symptoms, that, that's just. Being responsible with everyone else to. Make sure that we're healthy when we're coming in and, and we're around in public. So I, you know, I know I'm rambling a little bit, but it's really just asking us to. All continue to be thoughtful of everyone around us and, and do what we can to. To keep, you know, everyone safe. We're going to get through this together. We're going to get through it well and. Just thank you to the district for, for working so hard and being so focused on this.
Chad, you reminded me of when the kids were small. And I'm sure you all remember when your children were very little. And you know, there are always folks that sent their kids to school when they were really sick. And probably shouldn't have been there. You know, the kids whose eyes were glassed over and you could tell that they'd been given some Motrin before they were dropped off. Because there was a meeting that mom or dad had to go to and look like we get it, right? Like we all work. We understand that it's hard. But, but you know. I ju, I just want to say, I mean, the reason why we're not seeing this as harmful as it could be is because we vaccinated ourselves and our children. And we've worked to protect them. And, and hearing you talk about, you know, showing up and, and doing what's right for the community, I think about, you know, being a Gen Xer. Remember we, you know, we used to always say, think, think globally, act locally, remember that? And so that's what we're doing here, right? We're thinking about the whole world community and thinking of the whole Somers community and trying to protect everyone. And just be smart and be safe. And if there's one thing that I'm really grateful for hearing today. For, from the good doctor who shared with us at the beginning, and Mary Rose, you said something about the science isn't really nearly, it's science, right? Like you learn more, you, you do something different and that's learning, right? And so I don't know. I mean, was it right for folks to send kids to school sick? No, might we think about it different now? I think people are. I hear people saying, you know what? My kid's got sniffles. I'm just going to be cautious and not send them in. So to all the parents that are doing that, thank you. I know so many folks are doing that. And you know, this is a strange time and we're going to get through it together. I still stand by the, there was no learning lost. We've learned to be actual global citizens, thinking about each other in the global community. I want to be together in person. I don't want to be in Zoom either. But I don't know. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for, for, for finding time to do this anyhow. Thank you.
All right. Anybody? Did everybody have their chance to speak? If anything, okay. All right. Well, yeah, I mean, a lot of the, the same things that. I have to say, um, first, Stacy, thank you for all the, the work that went into your presentation and into the, some of the supplemental materials that you gave us. That we could have an opportunity to look through to, you know, further detail some of, answer some of our questions. And. Yeah, and thanks for all the time to give us the COVID update and sort of explain the evolving situation. I definitely did not want to be back on Zoom for a board meeting, but I'm grateful that we still had that opportunity. So we didn't have to postpone this meeting. So I guess it works. And I definitely did not want to be here. And we started the school year, I was hoping we'd be talking about taking masks off in January, not talking about, can we even stay open? So I definitely do think it, it is important to try to keep the schools open if we possibly can. We're fortunate so far. Because not every school in Westchester or Putnam around us has been able to do that. And, and I do acknowledge that there was kind of both. Learning loss, we do have evidence of learning loss in some ways. And are there other lessons our kids learned? Yes. Did some kids have a great experience with hybrid or remote instruction? Absolutely. And for other kids. It, they really, really need to be in school because their situation is different. Whether it's their learning situation or their social situation or their home situation. So I think that's why it's really important that we do have our schools open. Because some kids really, really do need that. And so acknowledging that, you know, our own personal experience isn't everybody's experience. With everything, there's that, that range. So I'm glad we can do what we can. And just, you know, when it comes to that, what do we need to do? To try to, to support the community and keep things open as hard as it is. Absolutely, that responsible stuff, but also it seems like contact tracing. Has fallen by, you know, is, is having trouble keeping up now. And with so much access to home tests, there's not, there's a lot of personal accountability. It's not as much, you know, it used to be the only way you were diagnosed, it was coming from a lab. So the school district got information, got the call. And the parents got the call and everybody got contact traced. And it's a lot more on our, on our system now. So please, you know, if you know that your kid was exposed and they're not vaccinated, you know, follow. It's on you, you know, the school district might not know that. But it's really on you to help protect the other, the community and protect the other kids, protect the other teachers. And similarly even, you know, there's breakthrough cases. So even if your kid was vaccinated and they'd been exposed, make sure that, you know. You're, you're just being honest with yourself and with the school district about what's going on and. You know, it, it's better that your child maybe misses five days of school. And gets a test than coming into school, ending up being positive and now the teacher's out and now that class can't function. You know, so just being mindful of that, just please be honest with yourself, be honest with the school. And support our nurses in the work they're doing and our teachers. So that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Heidi. I'll go ahead and just finish out and we'll close the meeting. So just a couple of things. Again, I, I appreciate the board's ability for us to bring the COVID update tonight. Obviously very important. And then a, a good conversation on special services. One of the things I did want to just kind of go back to a little bit earlier, I just want to, maybe if I misspoke earlier, I apologize. This is not a financial trouble we're having right now to say, hey, Ray, can you go spend some more money? And to go ahead and create choice, you're learning home. That's, that's not it. The reality is, is it took months and months to hire employees and to do that, to kind of turn that piece on. We're not prepared to do it. Everything we see and even heard from Dr. Bars tonight, we're talking about a relatively short window of time. And the idea about being mandated for, for distance learning that, that was not a, you know, a mandate for us. There are schools across our state that did no such thing as live instruction. They just did asynchronous and it sat out on their webpage or it sat out in someplace there. So. We have what this board committed to last year. I greatly appreciate, I know our community greatly appreciated to make everything happen last year. We're in a different spot. And I think Dr. Bar spoke to that very well. What I'm looking at is number one target here tonight. And I heard from our board and our, our district physician, as well as everybody else is. We need to keep these schools open. So to do that, we are marching every possible resource we have. So we have wonderful teaching substitutes. We have teachers on special assignment. We have teaching swapping duties from one grade to the next. To keep these doors open. Is it ideal education right now over the, you know, the next week or two? No. Our kids are with us, they're in person, and that's the target that we have. So to do that, we have to have every single employee involved in this and we do. I know we spoke wonderfully and positively about our nurses tonight, the critical part they play in our district. Absolutely. I don't want to forget our food service team. They're still serving hundreds of children on a daily basis so they can eat and be fed. We are actually seeing more children accessing our lunch programs. For example, at the high school, I mean, I apologize, our breakfast program at the high school than we ever had before. So there's a need out there. We're meeting that need more than ever before in that area. I would say again, certainly our administrative team, working together across the district in their own areas and doing everything they possibly can. Our billings being open, walking over at SAS earlier today. Just between lunch being switched, their team quickly jumped in there, wiped everything down in that cafeteria, made it keep going. Our phone office employees doing just unbelievable work. The amount of phone tracking and logging that's coming in these billings now. Is exponentially more than it ever has been in the past. I, I can't think of anybody on this team who isn't doing everything they possibly can to keep our skills open. For our children. And when I was here yesterday, first day back from the break with our kids. It was in the air. The kids wanted and needed to be here. You can hear it in their voice, in their laughter and in their support. And I talked to a few parents again today. I wasn't sure if I should send them. My kid wanted to be there and I can see they needed to be there. So again, I just wanted to let the board know, it's taking. All five hundred of us to make this thing go. Plus a little bit there as we're trying to get anybody to come and be part of the team. And we've got folks who are just doing everything. And I want to thank every member of the Somer School District family. This is what it takes to get it done. And we will, we'll make this through the next couple of weeks and whatever comes its way. And like Dr. Burstein, day by day, that's where I'm at right now. As a new teacher, back in the day, it was what I used to call lesson plan deep. I'm just, that's about how far ahead of ourselves as we are. So now it's like, let's take care of today and we're ready for tomorrow. And we are, and we'll keep it going. And again, thank you for the board support now and as we have gone through this the last few years. So. Thank you, everybody. And if I didn't say it as we started, Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you, Ray. And yeah, Happy New Year, everybody. And now be it resolved that this special meeting workshop of the Board of Education be adjourned. Second. Well, in favor? Opposed, abstained. All right. Good night, everybody.